Right at six thirty, I'll call the meeting to order. This is the Committee of the Whole Public Works Environmental Services and Facilities for Tuesday, February twenty second, twenty twenty two. Could I have a mover for the agenda as presented, please?
So move.
I have a mover. Do I have a seconder?
No, second.
Counselor Bill Law, I'll call the question. All in favor? Thank you. And there are four council, council people at their desks. Deputy Mayor Deschamps is, I believe, on the way. He will be here shortly. And on remote soon, we have our clerk Rebecca Williams. And we have Mark Packwood, advisory member of this committee. We have Mr. Spencer from the township. And we have David Anabel. And we also have the deputy clerk Ms. News Nuga. And I don't see anyone else online at this time. Thank you.
Three members of staff in the chambers.
And we have three members of staff in our chambers. We have our Director of Operations, Mr. Shaw. We have Chief Moore of the fire department. We have Wendy Van Koolen, our CDC coordinator. And we also have the C A O, Mr. Grant, in attendance. Thank you. That brings us to number three, disclosure of material interest and the general nature thereof. Do I hear any?
When you're. I'm here.
Hearing none. Thank you. And that brings us to number four, which is business arising from the previous committee of the whole minutes. And you'll find that in your package on page one to six. Concerns, questions, errors, and prior issues.
I'm here.
None. Thank you. And that brings us now to our number five, which is delegations and presentations. And we have none here tonight. Number six is discussion items, which we have not shown tonight. That leads us to number seven, which is our action and information items. And the first one is an application for severance at twenty seventeen County Road Two, Boulder Enterprises. And our CDC coordinator will be speaking to this. Wendy, if you would, please.
Thank you, through the chair. We do have David Anabel joining us by Zoom tonight. The applicant on behalf of Nancis older enterprises. I think it would be easy if I just did a quick overview from page thirteen of page one hundred and thirty. This page has a screenshot of our zoning bylaw. And it also has a screenshot from each schedule of our official plan, Schedule A and Schedule B. And you can see the difference here. Our zoning bylaw has the environmental protection wetland zone coming up all the way, almost all the way to County Road Two. And that was adopted in twenty twelve based off of the official plan. That was in effect at the time. Now, we adopted a new official plan at the end of twenty nineteen. It was approved by the counties in twenty twenty. And you can see the provincially significant wetlands in Schedule A. There it says natural heritage resource policy area. By the way, that always means provincial significant wetlands in our township. And you can see the flood plain there in Schedule B. And notice how those wetlands are a lot further south than what was in our zoning bylaw in twenty twelve. So our draft zoning bylaw would, our draft zoning bylaw reflects the current official plan we have right now. But until that zoning bylaw is passed, right now, the zoning of most of this property is environmental protection wetlands. It would be really tough to get a lot in there without touching the environmental protection zone or the flood plain. But that is two point four seven acres. That's what required in our official plan. And still have a building envelope there that you can build it. So it's tough to get two lots in there. But knowing that it's reasonable to reduce that environmental protection wetland zone based on our new official plan, the applicant's proposing a severance here. So the severed lot is two and a half acres. And the retained land still has a building envelope there. They've prepared an environmental impact statement in support of the application. Additionally, there's been a geotechnical investigation and an archaeological assessment. So NOVATECH has prepared a report here after their review of the application. And they've shown how it's consistent with the official plan, and they made some recommendations. I know you've all read the report already, so I'll do a very brief overview summary of NOVATECH's recommendations. It's not, they submit, the applicant submits an environmental impact statement. And also, number two, a geotechnical investigation to the satisfaction of the township. Now, the applicant already submitted those reports. The conservation review, conservation authority reviewed them on our behalf. And they had some comments. The applicant has submitted revised reports. They just haven't been reviewed yet by the conservation authority. It looks like most of the conservation authority's concerns are addressed in their reports. But we'd like to, we'd like to have conservation authorities review before we sign off. So until then, we'd like to leave that as a condition of the severance. Another recommended condition is that the applicant submitted a scaled site plant prepared by an OLS delineating the top of slope, the floodplain elevation, and the final development setbacks. This is based on the environmental impact statement and the geotechnical investigation. Once we have them reviewed and approved by the conservation authority. Also, that the applicant obtained a zoning bylaw amendment. Now, this is required because we haven't updated our current zoning bylaw right now. So right now, the zoning, most of that property is environmental protection wetland. They would need to apply for a zoning amendment to make it match our official plan. And lastly, that the applicant entered into a development agreement to implement the recommendations of the geotechnical investigation, of the environmental impact statement, and also of the archaeological assessments. All of those reports have some mitigation measures or recommendations in them that we could enforce through a development agreement.
You've heard, you've heard the CDC coordinator's report. Questions, concerns? Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. So thanks very much. So as I read the NOVATECH report here in front of me, the, the NOVATECH report is, as I conceived it, says that if we decide to recommend consent to the severance, here are four conditions which they feel should be attached to that recommendation. But then in the last paragraph, on page eleven, they say alternatively, the township could also request that the applicant provide a revised geotech environmental impact statement for approval prior to recommending approval of the consent application to the counties. So I don't understand why we wouldn't take the alternative course here and make sure that all the ducks are in order before we recommend in favor of the consent application. So maybe that's what's in process right now. Maybe that's what report, the verbal report that we just heard gave us. But I'd just like to have that confirmed. Through the chair. Thank you.
Is that something that can be confirmed tonight? Or will you have to get back to?
Yes, through the chair. That, that's an alternate recommendation that we could take. So we could wait until the conservation authority has reviewed those reports and we have those reviews. And then recommend in favor of the severance if you, if you choose so. I should say, I'm going to make a decision on the application. We received the application in November already. And it's been a very long review process. And at first, we weren't comfortable bringing this to committee until, because the application had a long list of, of, of comments. And we didn't want to bring this to committee with so many things outstanding. But the applicant has provided a revised environmental impact statement. And they've provided a response to the geotechnical investigation concerns that the conservation authority has. It looks like almost all of those concerns are addressed. And the ones that I'm not sure are addressed yet would, would be for the zoning amendment that we know is a condition of the severance. So with NOVATECH, we felt confident that with these conditions, we could recommend in favor of the severance now. But that option to wait is still available. We'd wait until the conservation authority responded. And it would just go to the next meeting. But that's going to mean it's not going to be at council's table until the end of March instead of the end of February.
But there is not a recommendation here tonight? That I'm, or did I miss that?
Well, I would follow NOVATECH's recommendation here.
I see. Okay.
And not the alternative one, not the one that says alternatively, recommend those five conditions from the NOVATECH.
So in other words, no. Through the chair.
Go right ahead.
So in other words, there's two issues here. There's the severance issue and there's the rezoning issue. Which comes first?
The severance application has been made already. The zoning amendment application would be a condition of the severance application. And we wouldn't receive the zoning application until we have the conservation authorities comment.
Okay, so then just addressing the severance application, we would, we would recommend in favor of the severance, provided that those four conditions, those five conditions were a condition of the severance. Okay, so that seems like a safe enough way to go. But I, I, I quite agree with this coordinator. I don't want to approve the zoning amendment until I have the final comments from the conservation authority. Now, how do we recommend in favor of the severance application? Other than to say that this committee would recommend to council that the severance application be approved in principle, subject to the following recommended conditions. And then just quote these five from the report.
Through the chair, the, the standard wording that I, that I usually use in my staff reports are that committee recommend, that council recommend in favor of severance E one sixty five twenty one with the conditions that all of those conditions. I read them all out.
Okay, so I see which way this can go. I think I'd be prepared to make that recommendation on the floor here. If I can find a seconder. But I don't like making motions that I don't actually have in writing in front of me. That's what makes it difficult.
While you're, while, while you're.
I don't have anything to write with. I don't have, and I'm not going to write a motion while I'm sitting at the table.
Correct. So while, while you're thinking about that, can I just see if there's any other questions or concerns at the table? Hearing none. I would just like, on page thirty three of one thirty, there's a picture of a subject lands from County Road Two to the river. And I'd just like to know what the lead line intersecting with the property is. What, what does that mean by?
Through the chair, that's the geotechnical top of slope. So that is determined through the geotechnical investigation that was provided with the, with the severance application.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't know whether we can move on from this issue. I'm just suggesting that perhaps we can move on while we're moving on with the other items on the agenda. Maybe the CDC coordinator can put a paper motion together.
Would that be suitable, Madam?
I want to thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you so much then. We'll just defer to that until later. And that moves us on to our next topic, which is seven B, which is the fourth quarter fire report. And Chief Moore, would you like to highlight for us, please?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
His hands raised in regards to the last item, seven A.
Yes. Sorry.
Yeah. Is it, is it, have we moved on or, or are we going to, am I allowed to speak?
Until we have a recommendation written. And the coordinator is working on that now. And that'll probably come to us within the next few minutes.
Okay. My, my only question is, is to, to staff. I'm, I'm looking at the new build to the west of, of that location was built, I believe, in two thousand and twenty or two thousand and twenty one. Did it have to, it, it's on the same flood plain. It's the same elevation. You look at it from the above satellite images, I believe it's twenty one oh six, but, but I may be wrong on the number. Just wondering if it, like when it, when they filed for their building permits, did they have to go through, you know, all of the, the same, I'm going to call them hindrances, that, that this property in this location has to go through as well?
I'll defer that one of information.
Go ahead.
So my understanding is that those two new builds, this, this is Deputy Mayor authority.
That is, that is the Deputy Mayor. He has arrived by Zoom.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Can't recognize the, this, I'm recognizing the voice only.
Okay.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor.
I would say, so my understanding is that the other two lots, the other two lots were already severed and already zoned property, were they not?
Through the chair, I haven't prepared anything on this property and I.
On those two properties?
No, and I don't issue the building permits. I wouldn't know without checking the building official.
Neither would I. Here's, I know that they, they're owned by a different owner to start with. And then, and the two properties were already separate, separate properties before they were, before the purchasers who purchased them from the original owner came looking for a building permit. So they were already zoned. They were already severed. They were already in existence. So then it just becomes a question of issuing a building permit.
The building permit. So, so the real issue then is the actual change of zoning from, from what it is to, to residential lots.
The issue.
Good. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, there's no, no one else that I can see. Now, you have that potion ready now?
I don't think you're going to be able to read my reading on this. I can read it out of the first problem.
Then I guess you're going to have to read it out.
Okay, I know what I can do.
Before we move on, we'll get, we'll put that back.
Through the chair, that committee recommend, that council recommend in favor of severance E one sixty five twenty one with the conditions that one, that the applicant submit a revised environmental impact statement to the satisfaction of the township. Two, that the applicant submit a revised geotechnical investigation to the satisfaction of the township. Three, that the applicant submit a scaled site plant prepared by Ontario Land Surveyor delineating the top of slope, floodplain elevation, and the final development setbacks based on the approved environmental impact statements and geotechnical investigation. Four, that the applicant obtain a zoning bylaw amendment which addresses the following. A establishes a revised zone boundary in relation to the provincially significant wetland in accordance with the official plan. And B establishes an appropriate residential zone category for the lands to be developed for residential use, including appropriate zone standards to address development constraints and setbacks as identified in the geotechnical investigation environmental impact assessment, impact statement, my call is. Five, that the applicant enter into a development agreement to the satisfaction of the township to implement the recommendations and findings of the updated geotechnical investigation environmental impact statement and stage one, two, and three archaeological assessments.
I'll move that, Chair.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Counselor, Counselor Hunter, thank you. And I would just at this point in time like to point out to the, to the gallery that Deputy Mayor Deschamps has joined us via Zoom. And that was his comments a little bit earlier. We have a mover and we have a seconder. I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Counselor, Deputy Mayor, you're opposed?
No.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. I just misread your, misread your hand.
Mr. Mr. Chair, may, Mr. Mr. Bush is alive. He is live Zoom as well.
Thank you so much. Hi, Mr. Zoom or Mr.?
Mr. Sir.
Mr. Bush, nice to have you with us. Okay, we're going to move on to seven B, which is the, again, the fourth quarter fire report. And we left off with Chief Moore going to highlight our, our report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we completed twenty twenty one with one hundred and ninety four calls. Fire losses, we had two hundred thousand dollars approximately for a structured expansion bill. And approximately eighty thousand dollars for a contents fire in the basement. Did have one member department stationed too for personal reasons. During the fourth quarter, we had one thousand and seventy eight volunteer hours completed by the department. Training courses, two officers completed the NFPA ten twenty one. So that's fire officer level two, that they did that at the regional training center in Lynnhurst. Fire prevention activity, we attended both of the schools during fire prevention week and provided all of the children with some fire prevention information. Under activities, we hosted our annual boot camp in, in October. As well, the officers attended a meeting at HFI Pyrotechnics for an update on their operations. And finally, under burn permits, there were fifty permits issued in the fourth quarter and one thousand two hundred and seventy three burns registered in the system.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Moore. Are there any, any questions regarding the information item seven B? I'll start with Counselor Gillon.
I am good. Thank you.
Deputy, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you very much, Chief. So Chief, this, these, this two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in losses, that's just for the quarter, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Do you have any kind of idea of losses for the, for the year?
Sorry, I did not prepare that.
Okay, won't, won't, won't go too on that. I'm interested is under activity, the attendance at the HFI Pyrotechnics for an update on operations. So do all of the officers or how many officers would attend that?
Through the chair, I believe, I believe every officer was in attendance. That would be nine of us.
Now, I guess the question is, are we adequately equipped to respond to that location? I know it will depend on the nature of the, of the issue. But I, 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 I don't know how familiar your officers were with the operation until you did your visit. Was, was that the first sort of exposure to the, to the location? Or were, were you already familiar with the location and its business?
Through the chair, we were familiar with the, the operation. They, they invited us in. We've been back and forth a couple of times over some, some, some questions on response with HFI. So they invited us in just to go over where they were and how their business has changed over the past couple of years. And then the kind of direction they're going. I, I guess to answer your first question, we're prepared to, to handle an incident there because it would be more of a a slowdown and, and, and make sure nobody's hurt. If that makes sense, we're not going to rush in and try to extinguish a fire in certain areas of that facility. Our plan, if we are called there, is to wait for a representative to arrive on site so that we can have a joint incident command. So everybody knows where we're going and what we're getting into.
Okay, and then to the chair, I may, do they have an onsite response team of their own?
Through the chair, they, they do. But I think it's more of an investigative type of a system and probably incipient firefighting. They don't have, they don't have a fire crew per se for extinguishment.
They don't. It's, it's just that the location is remote to start with by the very nature of the business. And sometimes in these kinds of locations, the owner does stand up an initial response team kind of hold things or try to put things in check, if I can put it that way, until outside resources arrive. But what you're telling me is that they haven't organized to that extent yet.
Through the chair, I'm, I'm going to say that they, the nature of that business, depending on the product they're dealing with, nobody's equipped to fight that fire. So it would be evacuate the area. Other, other areas would be, you know, what a typical firefight, a vehicle fire or a dumpster on fire. I believe they, they would attempt to suppress a fire like that. They've got, they've got plans for each building.
Oh, they do.
Each building would be unique as to the response.
Okay, fair enough. All right, we'll leave it there. I, I appreciate the fact that you and your officers, officers attended and, and familiarized yourself with several, with not only the location, but the extent of the operation. And they, they do appear to be a growing operation. Thanks very much.
I'm sure the chair, we do also have another date to bring, bring the rank and file in for, for an evening to do an actual tour of the facility for familiarization for, for everybody.
Oh, that's great. Thanks very much, Mr. Chair.
Deputy Mayor Deschamps, do you have any questions for Chief Moore?
Uh, no questions. Just one, just one for information. And it's on page forty nine of one thirty, and it's the training courses attended. And the question would be, or the compliment would be lots of training, obviously, and that's, and that's fantastic during a difficult year. Question would be, is that for the quarter or is that for the whole year?
Through the chair, I'm sorry, this, this report is strictly for the fourth quarter.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. Appreciate the, the update. Good, good job, Ryan. Chief Moore, sorry.
Counselor Hunter? Question, I guess, through the chair, the chief when you're visiting HFI. I, I believe mostly builders are constructed under a very safe regulation. They're all certain fire protection, explosion protection built into these buildings reason for separation and control. Pretty tight. Control what's in these buildings, how much is in there or not?
Through the chair, that's correct. They have, I believe their, their license requires them to only have a certain amount of product in each building. And there are different buildings that have different systems based on the products that, that are contained in those buildings.
Mr. Packwood? Any questions for the chief? Mr. Packwood?
I think he's gone. I don't see him.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Okay. No, I have no questions for the chief right now. I'm sorry for the inconvenience. I'm on my wife's iPad.
That's an excuse, Mr. Packwood.
A good one.
Thank you. Mr. Bush, do you have any questions or concerns? We can't hear you, Mr. Bush. We still can't hear you, Mr. Bush. We still can't hear you, Mr. Bush. We frozen? No.
He's, he's indicating the next, he doesn't have questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I just, I just have one for, for you, Chief Moore, and that is under meetings.
Safe drive home.
Thank you.
What, what was that?
Somebody wished somebody else to save drive home. I think they were talking to Randy. That's not cool.
Chief Moore, just under meetings attended on the EOFA, which I am assuming is Eastern Ontario Firefighters Association Sports Meeting. Could you just fill us in on what sports were involved in or talking about here?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. The Eastern Ontario Firefighters Association put on our annual convention, so our, our field day. And this would be the committee that specifically deals with the, the field day competition components. They would be talking about rule changes and that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you. Thank, thank you for that. Anything else, Counselor Gillon?
Yes, thanks, Deputy Chair. When we're on that field day, who's hosting it this year? Chief, who do we know yet?
Through the chair, Athens is hosting it this year.
Here, the date?
June 11th.
Thank you.
Okay, here ain't nothing else. I'm going to move on. And that brings us to the seven C, which is the 2021 MTO report. And I know we're all anxious to hear about this one. This is an information item on page 53 and 54. Chief Moore, could you highlight this for us?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. I will skip right to the chase on page two. That is a summary for the year, not just the fourth quarter. So the left-hand column, those were calls where we did not provide an approved service and we were not paid the amount that had been left. And columns on the right, the six calls on the right were calls that we did perform an approved service and therefore were paid the total of $35,569.
Questions? And I'll start with Counselor Hunter.
For the chair, the chief, just one, one question. I want to get paid in the second of the first 2021 24 hour report. That must have made you actually was.
Through the chair, that was the postage, the truck carrying all the Canada Post product on 16.
Deputy Mary Deschamp?
No comments or questions, other than it's nice to see, to see it not half and half that it's 36 versus 13. So that's good.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor?
So I just wanted to note it for the minutes then that we're collecting about 72% of the billing, of the billings that we've generated. And failing to collect about 28%. And I do, I do refer to page 53. And the services eligible for payment include vehicle extraction, fire extinguishment, and spill containment. Then there's a period. And the following are examples of high rate responses that do not qualify for, for payment. So rendering first aid. I want to make sure, Chief, that I've got these correct. Rendering first aid does not qualify for payment. Neither does directing traffic. And then, of course, is a situation where we arrive in the vehicle, is in the ditch with no injuries, and we leave. All three of those are not eligible for payment. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
I'm, I'm concerned about the one that says rendering first aid. So even if we're first responder there, we, we can't claim a call and, and, and get compensations for first aid rendered?
Through, through the chair, that is correct. We, we have submitted in the past and they, and I can't remember the, there's a legal precedent that they quote every time it's involved with first aid.
So continuing on, Mr. Chair, again, this has been a longstanding issue for me going back to 2007. When we made, you and I, as a matter of fact, have made several delegations to various ministers along the way during that period of time. Trying to make the point that the very fact that we respond is a service. And so, Chief, I just threw the chair to the chief. Chief, there was some indication during a previous meeting that this issue had started to gain some traction at higher levels within the firefighting services. Can you tell us if there's any real traction there? Are, are the, the officials in the firefighters association making any progress at all with this issue?
Through the chair, to, to, to the mayor. This is one of the, one of the higher priority items of the Association of Fire Chiefs. And I believe from some of the emails that I've seen back and forth that there, there is, there is progress in this area. And hopefully sometime in the future, it will be something that I can report.
Well, are they aware that we have direct access to ministers at, at ministerial delegations at the Roma Conference and at the AMO Conference? And that they could piggyback with us and other municipalities that have the same issue? We would be happy to host joint delegations with those, with the minister. Are, are they aware that that avenue is available to them?
Through the chair, I believe so. And, and the, the Fire Chiefs Association also have a, a day of, I can't remember what they call, but basically they, they have their own day, but they can set up meetings with, with those people. And then they do, they present in their towards, towards your goals.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Counselor Gillon? Thank you, Deputy Chair. Just getting back to, Deputy Chair, to Chief, that render of first aid. Like if we have a medical assist of 416, ambulance, Canada tent or somewhere else, or if it did, like for example tonight, we won't, we won't get paid for that?
Chair, that's correct.
That's a hard one to swallow.
But if we extract from the vehicle, we will.
Pull first. No, no, yeah, yeah. But still, I'm just saying, someone pulls over, has a heart attack.
Yeah.
The ambulance is in the ditch or, and another call calls us for medical assistance for, for why we don't get paid.
Correct.
So I don't know, kind of. Super sad.
Just sidebar to what Mary Seale had indicated is, perhaps Mr. Grant could, could fill me in here. Is there any word on whether the AMO convention is going to be virtual or in person?
Through the, through, through the chair, I believe that they are looking at attempting to have that in person. It was, what was the last correspondence that I received? I will, I, I will have to confirm that.
Yes, okay, okay, thank you. I'm just, I'm just thinking, Mr. Mayor, that maybe we should take another run at the Minister of Transport on that one. I'd be more than happy to do so again. Sorry, go ahead. Mr. Packwood, any questions for Chief Moore? Can you hear me, Mr. Packwood? He said?
Says Carol Jones Packwood. That's his, that's his square, but he's not there.
Yes, he's not. Mr. Bush, can you hear us?
He said, he said no questions.
Okay, thank you. Anything else at the table? If not, I'm going to move on. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mr. Chief Moore for your, for your report. And that lets you have the hope for a moment or two. I see you're back on a little lot. But that brings us to seven E, which, or seven D rather, which is the fourth quarter operations report. On, it's an information item only, and it's on pages 55 to 59. And Mr. Shaw, would you highlight your report, please?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. So for the public work section, loosening our top maintenance in the fourth quarter. They were creating roads to make ready for winter gravel, or sorry, making for winter operations. For winter control, they respond to 10 winter control events, all freezing rain, by approximately loads of sand. Misplanned is, we had 55 service requests and 56 work orders completed in the fourth quarter. 30 street signs installed, replaced, and the RCMP requested that the township install signage at the Cardinal and Galco docks to deter smuggling. Waste homes will cite, there was 460 vehicles attended, were 13 Saturdays, and total bunch car sales of 4,766, 50. Free brush disposal at the transfer station in November, and brush pick up at urban areas was completed. For environmental services, the fourth quarter water treatment plant, plant flow summary. Typically low flows in the fall, it's kind of a bell curve. Low, low average to here, the obstacle force, 37 years two per day. Fourth quarter water treatment plant operation parameters, all the parameters for complaint. For, for quarter, some reports for industrial part, again, all levels compliant with the guidelines. Fourth quarter report for window bumper station. Kind of standard flows there, they have zero flow there, but that was for the semi annual shut down. Solar boots, very low flows for the quarter. Where we spot our treatment plant, normal flows for that period, and the parameters all were below compliant or objectives.
And, and that, and that, that is it, Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Thank, thank you so much. Counselor Gillon, do you have any questions or concerns for Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I have one question that I don't, I don't think you can answer. Like we had this quarter, total bunch carried for the quarter is 47, 66, but in dollars. What about, what was it the previous year for you? I couldn't tell you. I just want to compare it's up or down, so. Uh, no, that's it.
Thank you very much, Pass.
And Deputy Mary Deschamp?
No questions from me, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hunter?
I'm here.
And Mr. Packwood? So not with. Mr. Bush?
No questions. Sign, sign, signaling, no, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shaw, for, for your report. And that will now bring us to the seven E, which is the fourth quarter recreation facilities statistics report. And Mr. Spencer, are you with us remotely?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair.
Good, I can hear you fine. Would you like to highlight your report, please?
Certainly, thank you and good evening. So this is a stats report, which hasn't been given over the last year or so because of the, the hours that have decreased over time because of COVID. So this basically, I didn't do a comparison to show 2020 to 2021. Because those numbers definitely wouldn't be accurate because of the amount of times that the arenas were closed down and that. So going forward, I, I'm hoping that we'll be able to get back into the quarterly reports that would indicate all of our facilities. But for this report here, I'm just basically signaling out the, the Johnstown Community Center, the South Center Hall, which is recorded on here. The Port of Johnstown meeting room is the meeting room that is at the Ingredient Arena. And then the two arenas. And basically, it's showing the available hours, the hours that were booked, it shows a percentage for the time period of October, November, and December. October numbers were a little lower in Spencerville, but we didn't start right at the beginning there as well. That's why it's not at 450 hours compared to the Ingredient Arena. Cause it didn't open until I believe it was the third or fourth of, of October. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'll start with Counselor Hunter.
I believe our numbers are likely to be rising next year as we get more hockey and figure skating and stuff starting back up.
Yes, that is correct.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Chair. Just, you know, no real, just a couple of comments, just disappointing, I suppose, as far as seeing, you know, seeing the lower, the 50%, the, the 0.8%. You know, the, the lows of usership, but not, not really surprising considering the year that we had and looking forward to getting it back to normal and getting it, getting those hours filled up again next year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I, I just wanted to go, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So I'd like to just look at the arena ice rentals for just a moment. So the available hours, the available hours that you use here in the three different months are based on the days in which the ice was, the, the arena was open and the ice was available. Is that correct?
Through the chair to the mayor, yes, that is correct.
All right, so we're only doing about roughly 50%. We're only renting about 50% of our ice time. Ingredient, ice seems to be a little bit more in demand than, than Spencerville ice. I'm just wondering, do, do you show any improvement on the percentages in January?
Through the chair to the, the mayor, no, in January, the rink, the, the arena was closed. This past.
Not the available hours, there weren't available hours in January.
That's correct, yeah, yeah. The, the, the first quarter report that you'll get will basically just be February and March. It won't include January because the arena was closed. I, I will say though, Mr. Mayor, what I've done this year, I say this year, the hockey season that, that basically started in September, is I've tried to front load the bulk of the hours at the Ingredient Arena. Because not all the associations are running at, at, at full capacity. The, the, the high, high performance AAA, double A leagues and the A leagues are, but the figure skating programs in Spencerville and even some of the South Gumbel minor hockey registration numbers were down. So I, if, if there's going to be air in, in an arena that is not renting ice, it'll be Spencerville more than it would be the Ingredient Arena. Because we always have the walking track available there. So I've moved a lot of our high performance teams to the Ingredient Arena. Also looking forward to the next couple of years when potentially the, the Prescott Arena opens. And some of these associations are going to want to grab ice there. So I'm trying to accommodate our, our high-end users as well as, as the South Gumbel minor hockey, which is your typical high-sleeve minor hockey programs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. That gets me to the kind of the nub of my question. Because when you look at the three months, the availability, the available hours. Well, in October, Spencerville had a few less hours available than Ingredient. And I, I, I understand totally why you're trying to front load the Ingredient Center. Understand that totally. But the question that begs to me is, do we not have then, and I guess we can't use January for an example, and maybe we can't use February, but do we not then have maybe an opportunity to reduce the available hours in Spencerville? Even further, or at least so that it's, they're not equal to the available hours in, at the Ingredient Center. And by reducing the available hours in Spencerville, would we not achieve some savings in operations? I mean, less staff time, less staff in, in the building time. There must be a. Uh, there must be a mechanism whereby if we shaved fifty or sixty hours off Spenserville Arena. In a month, that there would be some savings of. Of some sort, if not, if not supplies, certainly man hours and labor time. And I I leave that hanging as a, as a, as a question, Mr. Chairman, not asking. Uh, manager to to answer it, but just seems to me that that's a logical result of what we're seeing here in this report.
Thank you. Anything else? Counselor Dylan. Counselor Dylan.
I'm fine, thank you.
And either Mr. Packwood or Mr. Bush, if you would indicate, if you have anything to to ask. Hearing, hearing none.
Through the chair, it appears that Mr. Bush has no questions and. I'm not seeing Mr. Back with any.
Thank, thank you so much. I will, I will move on. Uh, thank you, Mr. Spencer.
You.
And that brings us to seven F, which is the fourth quarter facilities maintenance. Report. Uh, and once again, Mr. Spencer, will you highlight your report?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is a quarterly report for maintenance of our facilities. Typically, the work orders for the most other than maybe one or two are are done by outside sources. We had a total of twenty three work orders that were performed during the 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 fourth quarter. And I've indicated them all. I certainly, if there's any questions, I can certainly answer them. And then the service requests are are primarily done by by the facility staff. That this is just kind of over and above just their 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 normal routine, daily routines, whether it be in the parks. Or in the arena facilities and we had a total of thirty one service requests that were. Uh, worked on over the course of the fourth quarter. So I'd be happy to take any, any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Spencer, just for clear my clarification, you've got W O, which I would assume stands for work order. And then you've got S R, is that, what is, what does S R actually stand for?
Uh, it re, it stands for service request.
Now, is it done by outside sources or staff?
No, as I indicated at at the start, the 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 work orders are primarily done by outside contractors. The service requests are done by my facility staff.
Thank, thank you. Uh, I'll start with, I'll start, if you have any questions for Mr. Spencer regarding this report, I'll start with Counselor Dylan.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Chair. Deputy Chair to the facility manager, ingredient center, see work order, arena lobby heater repair, boiler room, room heater repair. Are they electric or they gas?
Through the chair, they are gas to Council Dillabow, sorry.
And did that have to be replaced or just repaired?
Just repaired, minor repairs.
Both of them?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then on, uh, may, may I?
Yes, sir.
There. Deputy Chair to the facility manager in this pencil arena. We have a work order compressor to shaft seal replacement. And. Which happens. And then down below, though, you have another one work order, then sees a compression inspection report, no issues. It has to be an issue. We just did a shaft and a seal replacement.
Through the chair to Counselor Dillabow, the shaft seal was not part of the of the inspector and as part of the inspection, Counselor Dillabow. It was performed prior to a midseason compressor inspections. Our dates that are prearranged with simple refrigeration at the beginning of the season and they committed and do the those inspections. So the shaft seal was done prior to the season inspection.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Pass, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Deshaun, do you have any questions or concerns?
No questions at all, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Hunter?
No, no questions. They're, they're keeping up with the repairs.
Okay, uh, Mr. Bush or Mr. Packwood, if you can hear me, would you indicate whether you would have concerns or questions?
No questions or concerns for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Packwood. Mr. Bush?
Uh, the same, Mr. Bush is indicating that he has no questions.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Spencer, if I may just ask one question and it's on page sixty four. And it's the SR twenty one thirty seven. And I'm just curious as to. Why we would have to have a service requisition. Made up to return benches to the arena lobby. That just confuses me a little bit. Could you comment on that, please?
Uh, certainly. So what I do when there are duties that come up that. I have my staff wanting to do something over the course of of the week. I sometimes I'm I'm not able to meet with staff every day. So what does, what I do is I I create the service request. And that is issued to the staff and left on the desk in their office. So when they come in in the morning, they see that there's a service request to bring the benches back over. From the pool house into the arena lobby and mount them to the floor and that. So instead of just writing it on a piece of paper, we use the service request functionality.
Okay, well, yes, 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 thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Spencer. Yes, I'm, no, I'm okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. And. Great, that brings us now down to. The seven G, which is the whole disposal of surplus. Uh, goods, fire truck number eight and Chief Moore, would you highlight this for us, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. It was just a housekeeping item, a trucking was not. And not been sold when the report was given on December the sixth. So this is merely to advise counsel of the results of the auction.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Counselor Dylan, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair to the chief. Did that. That nineteen ninety six Ford, it was a pickup truck, right? Did that go with? The stainless steel, all the compartments around the back, they all went as a package. Yeah, that is correct. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Good price.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Deshaun, do you have any questions regarding the sale?
No, no questions at all. Just seems like a good price.
It was that? Counselor Hunter.
Yes, they're sized, buying stuff up for sale, get money for it. Could be on the old.
It is. Now, Chief Moore, this piece of equipment, it went to the government. Auction or the government surplus auction. Is is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, Mr. Bush or Mr. Packwood, do you have any questions? Please indicate.
No questions from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
No.
Thank you. And, oh, Mr. Mayor, follow up. And so, thanks very much, Mr. Chair. So, so through the chair, the chief, chief.
Do we deliver the the piece of equipment to a central location for the auction? Or is it just left here and people come to view it?
Through the chair, that's the the beauty of the gov deal site, the buyer is responsible to remove, remove their purchase from our site.
So did anybody come to inspect it prior to the auction or during the auction period?
Through the general.
Is that available to people? Oh, isn't that interesting? Thanks very much, Mr. Chair.
Good thinking. Okay, I've, I've been around, nothing, nothing further. I'm going to move on to next item, which is seven H. And it's firefighter proposed mandatory certification regulation. And it's on page sixty six to seventy six as an information item. So Chief Moore, enlighten us a little on this, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. So on January the nineteenth, the Solicitor General announced the plan to bring back firefighters certification. They originally had legislation in May of twenty nine, twenty eighteen that was subsequently revoked. Shortly after they revoked the the regulation in twenty eighteen, they. Said it is in response to feedback from stakeholders regarding the accessibility of training and insufficient time for implementation. Uh, and they have also used that to. Justify the closure of the Fire College in January last year to transition to a new training model. That consists of online courses, regional training centers, and contracts. Since the original regulation that was proposed in twenty eighteen, the fire department has taken steps to prepare for certification. Including doing a hazmat awareness and operations course in twenty nineteen. Uh, firefighter level one course in twenty twenty one. Uh, we have submitted and received approval for our firefighter level one and two programs that we can deliver in-house. And we have three members that are now adjunct instructors with the Fire College, but the fourth one is process. So what the the regulation does, the proposed regulation establishes the minimum certification level required for a fire department based on its level of service. And it should be noted that proposed regulation is the minimum level of training. The current level of service would be represented as item number eight in the regulation, a full service firefighter. So to achieve, to achieve the qualifications for a full service firefighter, following course would be required. So we have hazmat awareness, hazmat operations, firefighter, one thousand and one levels, one and two, as well as first aid. Uh, that will see with manipulation. That will be approximately two hundred hours to complete. The chart on page two is basically a snapshot of where we are at the present time. So I basically took the. The items that apply to our fire department and added a column on the right hand side that kind of gave approximately where we are. Right now to meet the, to meet the certification. So starting from the top, item eight would be basically your firefighter. And that would be made up of the, I had the. The five horses that I just talked about. And so on the right hand column, you can see we have forty one percent that have completed hazmat, eighty six percent. We did firefighter one, thirty six percent of firefighter two, and I forgot to add first aid, which would be, I assume, close to a hundred percent. Uh, unless we've had some people that need removals with the last two years. And the next one, item sixteen, that would be basically a captain. So all of our captains would accept for the exception of one are trained to NFPA ten twenty one. Uh, item eighteen would be pump operations. Uh, we have eighteen pump operators right now and they are either already trained to the NFPA standard or they would be eligible for a letter of compliance from the OFM through the transition. Item point two, training officers, we have five. Item thirty six, that's something new for us. Uh, I would think that we would be required to have heavy vehicle rescue based on our responses on the four hundred series highways. We do not currently have anybody trained to that level at this time. And then the last one is just kind of a note that. There, they are suggesting that any. All fire service should be trained to basically the awareness level for any kind of a technical call that you might receive. So those will be rope rescue, structural collapse, confined space, trench rescue, surface water, ice water, that kind of thing. We could, we could be sent to any one of those. So we should have a training on, at the awareness level to make sure that we don't. We don't get ourselves into trouble. Just to note that training is just, it's not certification thing, that's something that we can provide, that we can do in-house. So not included in that, in that table are kind of the one-off type things. Like fire inspector, public information officer, fire life safety educator, that kind of thing. Uh, I don't see those as being a big challenge for us because you're usually only talking with one or two people on the department. Well, there are some challenges that exist with meeting and maintaining the proposed regulation going forward. At the top of page three, training props, having your own training props will reduce the costs associated with renting the training grounds. Improve accessibility and allow firefighters to practice their skills on a regular basis. And when I'm talking with training props, I'm not talking about the, you know, the very expensive live fire training pop they have there. Talking like a place to store some vehicles, maybe a roof prop where you can demonstrate cutting a hole in the roof without actually being on a roof. You know, vehicles, that kind of thing. And the second one would be our honorarium. And we maybe should look at a system overhaul to ensure the compensation reflects the level of responsibility and commitment expected that going forwards. So to kind of sum things up, staff do believe that mandatory firefighter certification will enhance firefighter safety and result in superior delivery of service. So additional investment may be required, but these items could be implemented over multiple years and unexpected to have a huge financial impact. And I'm sure the council is where they are responsible to provide fire protection services as it determines maybe necessary. So our level of service is determined by council. A reduction, a reduction in the level of service would have a corresponding reduction in training. A staff believe that a reduction in our service level would be inappropriate at this time. Regulation three seventy eight eighteen requires every municipality to have a risk, community risk assessment. This is used to identify, analyze and prioritize risks of public safety and make informed decisions regarding the provision of fire protection. The deadline to complete this risk assessment is July of twenty twenty four. In light of the return of this regulation, staff will expedite the completion of the risk assessment. Finally, the Ontario Association of Fire Chiefs and the Fire Marshal's Office have posted multiple meetings with fire chiefs. To explain the regulation and compile questions and concerns. Some of the more common concerns include funding, availability of online testing, and most importantly, the capacity of the OFM to support fire departments through this transition.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Chief Moore. I'll, I'll, I'll open it up for questions and concerns and I'll start with Counselor Dylan.
Uh, thank you. Uh, you're the chair, you're the chair to the chief. I see that the training props. Is one that maybe is. Something we could share with our close municipalities, Presta, Augusta, so on, you know, we were saying we're looking for. Some, some training years, a few cars and so on. Would that be an opportunity? Not to go to lenders. My, my biggest problem is how are you going to get these guys, like heavy vehicle rescue? Where, like, you have zero percent. And who's going to teach us and where? I know, like, they're saying online, but how do you, how do you teach something like that online?
Through the chair, that would not be online and I I don't believe that the the courses for the technical rescue have been developed by the Fire Marshal's Office.
So there's lots to be done here. And the big, I can see where you're. Where it's a big responsibility on you guys, those offices, for sure. Um. Fire Marshal's Office is still. We're working with the preventive government office and 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 the fire chief for so good. The chair is our regulation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the last, Mr. Chair. Thank you. The, 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 I find, Deputy Mayor, any comments or concerns?
Uh, yeah, just a a quick question through the chair to Chief Moore. The two costs associated, obviously, the training will have, will have costs. The suggestion is that training props are going to add cost. And and the honorarium review would add cost as well, but I see nothing. Uh, or any of these in in the budget ask for this year, or can we expect to see that in future years? Thank you.
Through the chair to the deputy mayor, yes, I would suggest that some things will be coming forward in future years. Our, the compliance date is twenty twenty six for, for most of them and the technical rescue isn't until twenty twenty eight. So we do have. Plenty of time to put some things into action.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Hunter. No questions. All right, and once again, will, uh, Mr. Patwood and Mr. Bush, uh, indicate whether they have questions or not?
I have a question for the chief.
Go ahead.
Uh, through the chair to the chief. With the number of railcars in Johnstone with all the various petroleum products, should our employees or firefighters, do they need any special training? In case there's an emergency there, over.
Through the chair, we, um, Class B fires is a, a part of the, uh, NFBA thousand and one program. And we, we are also, uh, we do have training scheduled, uh, this fall for, uh, liquid propane fires as well.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Bush, nothing?
Mr. Bush is indicating he has no questions.
Thank you, thank, thank you, Mr. CIO. Mr. Mayor, uh, back to you.
Okay, so thank you, um, so a number of questions. So, uh, chief, it was an interesting, uh, hour and a half with the Solicitor General on February the sixteenth. As she outlined the introduction of this new regulation. And, uh, first of all, it's pretty obvious from page sixty-seven that we're a bit ahead of, well, you're least aware of the, of the situation, and I would say you've probably got to step up on, on, uh, on, uh, where we have to be. Because we're certainly almost where we need to be. When I look at, uh, item eight on page sixty-seven, we're almost where we have to be in July the twentieth, uh, July of twenty twenty-six. Uh, eighty-six percent have completed, uh, NFPA one zero zero one. And, uh, forty-one percent of the hazmat. So, uh, the big questions that, I took some comfort in, in, in page sixty-seven. On, on row sixteen, which is the captain's team lead interior attack. Uh, you said that that's basically the captains. And, uh, the job performance requirements are NFPA, uh, one zero twenty-one standard fire officer professional qualifications. And I think you said eighty-six, your report said eighty-nine percent. So eighty-nine percent of our sixty-six captains have taken that training. Uh, that means to me probably one or two that are not quite there yet. Are they, uh, pursuing that or in a, in an aggressive kind of way? They are the leads.
Certainly, through the chair to the mayor, yes, uh, obviously, it's difficult to, uh, for everybody to make time and everybody isn't available when a, when a course is, uh, when a course is delivered, but, uh, yes, it, it's required for the job, so it would, uh.
Okay, uh, I am interested, uh, from the, uh, time of the Solicitor General, uh, to go back to the basics here. And the training that we're, uh, obliged to teach is the training that's commensurate with the service that we provide. But I got the implication, uh, from the, from the seminar that the service that we provide should be based on the risk assessments. And you did refer to the risk assessment on page three when you indicated that Ontario Regulation three seventy-eight eighteen requires every municipality to complete a risk assessment. It is a mandatory requirement. So do you have a date in mind? See, the deadline is July twenty twenty-four, but is, do you have an earlier date in mind or do you have a mechanism to go about that? Because I think at some point, you're gonna be coming to us, if you haven't already done so, asking us to define in a bylaw-type manner what our service level is. Because it's only after you've done the risk assessment that we can, uh, formally a, uh, adopt the service level. And it's only after we've formally adopted the service level that you know the training that's required. Although I get the impression that we were already working to a pretty high service level without the risk assessment in place. Wonder if you could comment on that?
Certainly, uh, through the chair to, to the mayor, um, our, in our bylaw was updated at least in twenty twenty, where we did establish the level of service at that time. And just based on, uh, our community and the risks that we have, I would think that there, if there would be a change in our service, it would not be a reduction.
No, I quite agree with you there. But I do also think that there's, that the risk assessment would show that we probably should be adding, uh, thirty-six, the heavy vehicle rescue to our service level. And if we do add that to our service level, then for sure, the, the requirements of, uh, cer-, uh, number thirty-six are gonna follow all the way through. And my question will be like, how, if we added heavy vehicle rescue, how many people would we have to train at that service level? Everybody or just certain numbers, or how would we determine what's gonna happen there?
Through the chair, we, we would have to train everybody that would be providing that service.
How would we distinguish that? Because we're a volunteer department, we never know who's gonna be available to answer a call.
Correct, so ideally, we would train everything.
So that's a fairly onerous task then, in addition to what's required under eight, right? Service level eight.
Certainly, and, and I have not seen the requirements for, I'm not familiar with the technical rescue, uh, courses, so I can't really comment on how, how onerous that, that program would be.
I guess worrisome to me is that they haven't yet identified what, uh, what the training level would be. So it sort of seemed backwards to me.
Through, through the chair, if I may, it was disappointing in twenty eighteen when the regulation originally, uh, came forward and they did not have, the courses prepared at that time. And to have it come back again, uh, four years later, and some of the courses still aren't prepared, it's, it's very disappointing.
Yet that didn't come up in the seminar at all. That I can recall. Nobody's raised that point with the Solicitor General. Or with the Fire Marshal. I mean, the Fire Marshal was the host of the meeting, was he not, Mr.? Why did nobody raise that issue? And I was not well enough informed at that point in time to be able, I was in a learning mode for sure, and I'm still in a learning moment here, but those kinds of things bother.
I can't comment, Mr. Mayor.
So I'll, I'll go back then to some of the other things that the chief raised and, uh, once, one, uh, and and it was raised in the seminar. In the seminar, there was a lot of talk about the Ontario SEAL program. What is this Ontario SEAL program?
So, so that was through the chair. That was one of the changes that, that happened between the twenty eighteen regulation and the new regulation. Uh, the original one in twenty eighteen was strictly the NFBA standards. Um, this time, I think they were, uh, looking after some of the smaller departments that maybe have a lower service level, uh, to give them an opportunity to, uh, establish a service level and train to a standard, but not all the way to the NFPA. So they wouldn't be a full-service fire department, maybe they just do exterior firefighting only. Uh, maybe they don't do any hazmat, so, so they would just have to train to the, uh, Ontario Fire College level to be compliant for their.
Where does this Ontario SEAL come in?
Just another training level established by the Ontario Fire Marshal.
It's a level that.
Correct.
Ah, okay, all right. So now going back, uh, and just picking up on Counselor Dillabah's point. Is there any, um, now that this regulation is out, it's up for comment, I think comment period is ending very soon. The Solicitor General has made a big effort at reach out. Uh, so it, it must, Prescott Augusta must be fully aware of where this thing is going. Um, is there any talk amongst the three departments about sharing of props and, uh, sharing of a location where props can be stored and, and perhaps training conducted? Just within our own three little municipalities here?
Through the chair, we, we've discussed that in the past, but nothing specific since the introduction of this regulation.
Okay, but now with the introduction of this, and it's gonna become, the regulation is gonna be proclaimed here fairly shortly. Will that not be an incentive to kind of pull us the three departments together? From a training point of view? Especially, I, I like the idea of, of working together on the, on the purchase and storage of props that can be used over again.
Through the chair, there would certainly be some, some advantage to that.
So those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, and you were the last, uh, the last one to make your comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, so I'm going to move on now to seven I. And, uh, yes, seven I, which is the, uh, twenty twenty-one Cardinal Drinking Water, uh, Inspection Report. And it's in your package on page seventy-seven to eighty-five. And once again, it is an information item. And Mr. Shaw, would you care to highlight your report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On, uh, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, uh, MCP Officer Mr. Daniel White, did a form inspection in the Cardinal Drinking Water System. Inspection was unannounced. Special found no areas non-compliant with regulations or requirements, nor any recommendations, recommend best practices. Inspection risk rating of zero percent. There's attached copy of the inspection rating record, and full report can be made available to committee members on request.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Shaw, that almost sounds like a hundred percent, doesn't it?
Certainly, yes, sir.
Counselor Dillabah.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, and send it back to Chief Order Suit Service Operator and All Operations. Job well done, especially when it's, uh, one of those surprise, surprise. Obviously, we have a great crew. And, uh, they're doing their job, so thank you, thank you so much. Especially with the waters, with the way it is. Thank you. Go last again.
All right, Deputy Mayor, Mr. Shaw.
Uh, yeah, thank you through the chair, just wanted to, uh, echo Counselor Dillabah's comments to a fantastic job. Uh, pretty hard to do any better than, uh, than a hundred percent rating, so, uh, well done to all the staff and all.
Thank you. And Counselor Hunter?
Uh, just same as our council members stated, can't do better than a hundred percent. Looks like you're doing a great job.
And Mr. Bush or Mr. Patwood, any comments or concerns, please indicate?
Great job, just like all the other counselors.
Thank you. Mr. Bush?
Mr. Bush indicates a job well done.
Thank you, thank you so much, and I will, I will, uh, mimic or parrot the, uh, the same, uh, the, the same comments, uh, Mr. Shaw, thank you, thank you so much. That brings us now.
I'm gonna go last.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I reported out of.
So, Mr. Chair, there is no recommendation with this report, but this is one of those kinds of reports that I think should be highlighted in the minutes. And what bothers me about our minutes is that in many cases, the, the, the discussion is not, uh, captured. Uh, so I would like to make a, a recommendation here, and I'm gonna be looking for a secondary, uh, that the Cardinal Drinking Water System MOE CP Inspection Report, uh, as presented, as presented on February the twenty-second, be received and acknowledged by the council with thanks to the Environmental Services Operators and that the council notes a one-hundred percent compliance. That's the motion. I think I've said it slowly enough that it can be taken down verbatim and appear in the minutes verbatim. And I'm looking for a secondary.
Counselor Hunter, your second being? Uh, just a question to, uh, the clerk, uh, Madam Clerk. Are we okay on the recommendation?
Through the chair, yes, I've received that.
Okay, thank you. Any, any further questions or concerns? I'll start remotely, Deputy Mayor or Mr. Patwood?
No concerns, none by me.
Okay, thank, thank you. Anything around the table, I'm going to call the question, all in favor of the motion? Carry it, thank you. And that brings us now to seven J, which is the twenty twenty-one Cardinal Water System Summary Report. And it's on pages eighty-six to ninety-five, and there is a recommendation with this. Uh, the recommendation reads that committee recommends that council receive the twenty twenty-one water summary report for the Cardinal Water System. Mr. Shaw?
Isn't it the Edensburg Industrial Park Water System? Are we not on seven J?
Yes. Seven K is the industrial park.
I, I'm on page ninety-six.
You shouldn't be on page eighty-six, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Matt.
Six?
Yes.
All right, okay, I'm here now. Yep, so that was well, that was the intent of the motion that just was passed. Is this the same report? No, it isn't, it's a different report.
Drinking water and then.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So now this is a, Mr. Chair, just draw your attention here, the purpose of this report. Uh, this is a summary report, S U M M A R Y. And that, uh, error appears three places on the, on the briefing note. Including in the recommendation. So I'm happy to move the recommendation.
Yes.
With that correction.
Yes, okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll get to, I'll get to that shortly. But, Mr. Shaw, would you care to highlight your report here?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. So annually, uh, no later than March thirty-first in the following year, uh, water summary report is prepared in accordance with subjects two and three of the Ontario Regulation one seventy. And orders of municipal drinking water system require ensure that the report comes out. Um, the report is made out by the operating authority and presented to municipal council. Or must list various, uh, requirements of the act regulation and drinking water works permit, full drinking water licenses, provincial, any provincial laws that were not satisfied during, during the period. The recommendations mentioned, we recommend that council receive the twenty twenty-one water summary report for Cardinal Water System, and it is tasked for you to review.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Shaw, yes, we, we do have, we do have the briefing note and the, uh, and the report, thank you, um. Any questions or concerns at the moment? Deputy Mayor? Mr. Patwood or Mr. Bush?
None by me, Chair. No comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Bush indicates no comment.
Okay, thank you so much, I do have a mover, do I have a second? Mr. or County Counselor Hunter, thank you. I'm going to call the question, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
Is the, is the word summary correct, the spelling, Mr. Chair?
That was, that, that was, that was your, your ask.
Yep.
And I will just, uh, staff, will that, will that change remain?
So through, through, through the chair as part of the council resolution, that will have the correct, uh, spelling.
Thank you, thank, thank, thank you so much. Just bear with me a moment, I'll write with you. Okay, thank you, uh, moving on, that brings us to seven K, which is the twenty twenty-one Edensburg Industrial Park uh, Water System on pages ninety-six to one oh one, and there also is a recommendation on this as well. And, uh, I will let Mr. Uh, Mr. Shaw highlight this and, uh, and, uh, make the recommendation. And, uh, I will let Mr. Uh, Mr. Shaw highlight this and, uh, and, uh, make the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so the twenty twenty-one Edinburgh Summary Report. It's basically another water system, but it's a standalone system rather than one that has its own, uh, water treatment plant, as we get our water from Prescott. So basically, it, it follows under the same, uh, scrutiny as, as the Cardinal Water System. And the summer report is attached during your review.
Thank you, it, it certainly is, it may be known and, and before, and I'll start with Counselor Hunter, any questions or concerns? Thank you, Deputy Mayor, DeSham, do you have any questions or concerns?
Nope, no concerns or questions, thanks.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. And Counselor Dillabah?
No, I'm good, thank you.
And, and, and I have nothing, so thank you, uh, thank you for that, and we will now move along.
We have a recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do, uh, we have a recommendation, uh, so do I have a mover for the recommendation?
Remove.
Counselor Hunter and a second.
A second.
Counselor Dillabah, thank you, I'm going to call the question, all in favor? And that is Carrie, thank you. That brings us to seven L, which is the twenty twenty-one Annual Water Pollution Control Plant Report. Pages one-on-two to one-fourteen with a recommendation, and Mr. Shaw, uh, would you highlight this as well?
This is the twenty twenty-one Annual Water Pollution Control Plant Report. Owners municipal water pollution control systems required to ensure that any report is submitted to the MECP. No later than March thirty-first of the following year. Waste water, water pollution control by environmental compliance approval, uh, as listed as requirement. Recommendation that we should recommend or, uh, council receive twenty twenty-one annual report. For the Cardinal Water Pollution Control Plant, direct staff to submit the report to MECP prior to March thirty-first.
And thank you, Mr. Shaw, I'll start with Counselor Dillabah, any questions or concerns?
Uh, no, not, well, the schedule maintenance, uh, to the chair, to Mr. Shaw. I go, you guys are busy, it comes to just on your regular schedules and you have these unplanned, there was calls upon it. Um, I didn't realize truthfully, but, uh. Uh, when you look at the, the scope of, uh, of, of this, of the, uh, of the work that, uh, our, our, our people do. So, much convenience to be on top of all that, job well done again, thank you.
Now, Counselor Dillabah, you're referring to page one-on-seven, I believe?
I am, you, you hit it right on one-on-seven and one-on-eight.
Good, thank you, thank you, just wanted to.
I'm sorry.
To clear that up, uh, Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions?
No questions.
And Deputy Mayor?
No questions, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, and Counselor Hunter, on your. On there, uh, Mr. Packwood and Mr. Bush, uh, would you indicate any questions or concerns, please?
No concerns or questions, thank you.
Same, same permission.
Thank you, thank you, and, uh, we'll move us on now to item seven. I keep forgetting that, don't I, do I have a mover for the recommendation?
Someone.
Counselor Dillabah had a second here, Counselor Hunter, thank you, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Now, we can go to seven M, which is on pages one-fifteen and one-sixteen, information item only. Mr. Shaw, will you highlight your report, please?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. The MECP is a mandatory consolidated linear infrastructure ECA program. So basically, what it means is municipalities are going to consolidate all their ECAs rather than having, uh, ECA for Johnstown Drainage. Cardinal Drainage all into one ECA. There's a number of reasons they're, they're looking to do this, they're, they're making it more like the water system, so you won't necessarily have to go pipe by pipe. If you're changing, uh, putting an extra pipe in the drainage or something, uh, it may be part of your consolidated infrastructure ECA. But you can go ahead and do that without applying every time, and you don't need to apply for, uh, you know. If you do want a Johnstown, one to Cardinal, they're, they're different ECAs, you have to make separate application, so basically just, uh, kind of grouping them. And we did that with, uh, one stormwater ECA for the township, and then one sewage ECA township. Band-aid is to create efficient process for low-risk projects. Right, clear, transparent, consistent requirements, proof, environmental protection updated, consolidated terms, conditions. Establish a more comprehensive picture of sewer works across the province, reduce regulatory and administrative burden. And bring, uh, municipalities with pre-regulated stormnet strategic plans. Mission deadline for our ECAs was January twenty-second. And six applications were submitted to the MECP on January nineteenth, three for sanitary sewer and three for storm sewer. There's, uh, additional costs anticipated moving forward, uh, with the establishment program.
Thank you, uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Shaw, I'll start with Counselor Hunter. Deputy Mayor?
Nothing here, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, through the chair, on the bottom of page one-fifteen there, the last paragraph. Additional costs are anticipated moving forward to come into full compliance, including engineering, mapping. Camera inspection and entries into the Township Asset Management Plan. So, we've submitted three sanitary sewer systems into the program. And three stormwater systems into the program, all three of those then. Will have to be documented in the manner described in this paragraph, is that correct?
That is correct, through the chair, uh, through, for the sewer, for the most part, for sanitary sewer, uh, we're probably pretty much. Up to par on most of that stuff, uh, the actual. Program itself, you, you need to have mapping, uh, which is a good major component, which brings into effect the, uh, the camera inspections and so forth. To get mapping, uh, we have a sewer app, it's already, uh, for sewer end of it, but the stormwater is going to take a little longer. We, we've done mapping on our own, but, but they have certain criteria you have to meet to, to be in, in full compliance.
Well. It's the stormwater that concerns me, now, mind you, we're only submitting the stormwater systems for the, for the Hamlets. Cardinal Spencaville and Johnstown, right?
Correct.
We're not submitting it for the entire township, but still, even the mapping for Cardinal Spencaville and Johnstown is going to be. Uh, the mapping of the stormwater systems is going to be a fairly onerous assignment. And it not only has to be mapped, it has to be engineered, it has to be engineering goes with the mapping. So, is there an order of magnitude as to what this may and may or may not cost?
Through the chair, through the chair, uh, to the mayor, uh, not at this point, because we don't have the, the structure. And, and Bill will send it out for us, I would say, no, that the, uh, drainage programs that we have for Johnstown and Spensville now. Will accomplish a, a fair bit of that work, uh, had the drainage, uh, laid out. And, uh, will be already, uh, mapped out by, by the engineers.
Well, they're only small portions of the, of the Hamlets, of those two Hamlets. What is the deadline to be, to bring this into compliance here?
It's, um, flexible, I guess, at this time, they haven't come up with a deadline, and, and each, uh, municipality probably be a little. You, you, the other ones, depending on what, what you have, for example, Prescott would be just that, the town of Prescott. For us, we've got different systems all over the municipality, so it's going to change for, from, from municipality to municipality.
Is this, is this program a mandated program?
Yes.
I mean, even for the sanit- through the chair, even for the three sanitary sewer systems that we've nominated into the program. Cardinal Spencaville and the Industrial Park. Even for those three systems, and you did make the point that we've got a lot of that information already. Created, I'll say, it still has to be assembled and submitted, even that is going to be a big task, is it not?
Uh, for what we have remaining, yes, we've got, uh, quite a bit of the sewer anyways in, in the AMP already. So, we'd be looking more heavily on storm work.
Those are my questions, Mr. Chair, I'm a little bit concerned about this initiative, I mean, not that we had a choice by the sound of things. But it does seem to me that there's a fairly onerous task ahead of us here. And I, I understand totally that it, that it gets rolled into the asset management plan. And I guess one of the things that's bothering me is that. Which comes first here, does it get, does this work, this engineering, mapping, camera work, et cetera? Get rolled into the asset management plan, or is it already in the asset management plan? And it just has to be compiled and submitted to this, to this program? Because we're told that our asset management plan is up to date. But yet it sounds to me like there's a fair amount of work here, especially on the stormwater systems. So I'm not just sure what stage we're at, I'd like to see a report on, on just how much work is going to be required. To get these three s- stormwater systems engineered, mapped. And no camera inspections required, but engineered and mapped and ready for first submission to the system. And an estimate of cost, Mr. Chair, I think, I think we should know that, and we also, what is the deadline to do this?
Is that something staff can, uh, can get brought forward?
So through, through, through the chair, we will, we will look forward to bringing forward a, an, an updated report.
Thank you, now, Counselor Dillabah, do you have any questions or thoughts? Okay, thank you, there's, as I said, that's an information item, so there is no recommendation. Now, moving on to seven M, which is the twenty twenty-one draft Edwardsburg Distribution Water Budget. And this refers to everything outside of the village of Cardinal. And I'm at a loss as to who's going to highlight, uh, this, uh, this report. Can I, could I help call some information regarding that, please?
Uh, cer- certainly, Mr. Chair, uh, I don't, I don't mind, uh, providing the, uh, a little bit of background with respect to this report.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, just, just a reminder that, uh, this is with respect to the, uh, Edinburgh Distribution System, which is our industrial park. And, uh, the, the new export area, uh, right now, we have four users, and twenty-seven of those are residential properties. Just to give you a little bit, uh, of history, that, uh, the, the, the rate structure that's currently in place was put in back in, uh, two thousand and eight. With, uh, with a water purchase agreement with the town of Prescott, where there was a, a charge rate for the first fourteen hundred cubic meters. And then an additional surcharge for any consumption over that fourteen hundred cubic meters. In twenty sixteen, we entered into a new, uh, water purchase agreement, uh, with a capacity of six thousand cubic meters a month. The same rate that is being charged, uh, to the residents, uh, of the town of Prescott. But currently, uh, there's been no change to the, uh, to, to the rate structure within our, our system. So part of this, uh, we, we report looks to revise that rate structure, uh, to a similar, uh, system. That is in place in Cardinal Water System, which would have a base rate and then a consumption portion. In addition, the, uh, the report looks at the, uh, the estimates of expense and revenue. Uh, for the industrial park, uh, water budget in twenty twenty-two.
Yes, uh, thank you, thank you for that, uh, Mr. C. O. And there is a recommendation, uh, with this report, and it is, uh, that committee recommends that council approve. The twenty twenty-two budget estimates for the Edwardsburg Distribution Water System and direct staff. Draft a bylaw to impose user rates for twenty twenty-two. I'll start with Counselor Dillabah for questions and concerns.
Uh, yes, I just have one, the, uh, I have a couple. The, the, uh, three-quarter, five-inch meter size, category A, is that residential? Pretty much.
Yes, I would, ba- ba- basically, within this system, it would, it would be.
And, and the current billing, we had forty-six dollars a month, and we want to walk the fuck eighteen. As a monthly, as a monthly, uh, break, is that right?
Uh, so through the chair, on, on, on average, yeah, there's the, most residents, uh, on, on average, usually at sixty cubic meters. So they, they, they would see the, their increase in the dollar eighteen, uh, a month.
Uh, forty-seven fifty, okay, now, uh, a meter size, uh, the, the month, the formula, the monthly one, we've ever had this. This is new, isn't it, the sixty-one fifty a month, the four hundred twelve, for category B and so on?
That is, that, that, that is, that, that is correct. Uh, what, the system currently right now has the initial base rate of forty-six thirty-two. And then, uh, ba- based on the first fourteen hundred cubic meters. And then there's another, um, ratio that once you hit that phase, that is sort of a, a pro-rated. And then a third, uh, charge once you, uh, uh, get over a certain, uh, flow in that one.
So, just so I can get this, uh, category A residential, monthly bill's going to be sixty-one fifty, plus to forty-seven fifty?
So through, uh, through, through, just to clarify, the, to, the, all, all of the system has meter. The only reason we would use a category A, B, or C is it for some reason that there was a, uh, a non-functioning, uh, meter.
Meter.
System that, that, that took some time to, uh, took, took some time to replace.
Okay, okay, thank you, I, I understand that, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
So through the chair, all of the users currently have meters, is that correct?
Through the, through the chair, that, that, that is correct.
Okay, and are those smart meters that are read by Rita St. Lawrence?
Through the chair, that is, that is not the case.
Okay, so who's reading the meters now?
So, it is a combination, Rita St. Lawrence, uh, is, is reading, uh, the residential section. Using, uh, the, a meter with a wire, uh, to, to, to an external, what they call a puck. Where they, where, where they come in and, and they have to physically go on site and, uh, and, and read that meter. The industrial meters are typically done by your in-house staff.
Okay, so, is that data. Forwarded to Rita St. Lawrence, and does the billing go up from Rita St. Lawrence, or does the data come here and the billing goes out from here?
So through the, through the chair, the, the, the data, uh, comes from Rita St. Lawrence to us, and we do the billing.
Oh, the data comes from Rita St. Lawrence to us, and we do the billing?
That is correct.
And is the proposal that the data will remain with Rita St. Lawrence and they will do the billing?
No, through the chair, the, no, the, the, the transfer of data will remain the same with this system. It's just that, it's just an adjustment in the, in, in rate structure.
So we'll still do the billing?
We would still do the billing, uh, in, in, in here at the office.
And what changes then?
Uh, the rate structure from what was a, uh.
They're no longer based on six, on six, six hundred two meters a month.
Uh, so there was, there, there was a six thousand cubic meter a month, uh. Portion, or, or, or you would say that that was, the, the, the limit is, has sort of remained the same at six thousand cubic meters. But the current rate structure on bill is the, a base rate of forty-six point three-two. And then there is a, uh, pro-rated portion for that first fourteen hundred cubic meters. of water. And then after after we have exceeded the fourteen hundred cubic meters a month, it goes to another, to a different dollar charge per cubic meter. So it is actually that the system that's in place right now is 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 quite complicated. What we're really looking at is just simplifying, going to a a simple base charge, and then whatever you concern, you're paying uh three dollars and and fifty cents.
Right, okay, all right. That is quite a bit simple.
It it is quite a bit simpler because the the second charge is, I I want to say seven dollars and forty-eight cents cubic meter, but then you get to a certain amount in there, and then you go back down to a dollar a cubic meter, it's um.
Okay, so the essence, okay, I understand where we're going here and why we're going there now. Uh, and it is a, it is a much simpler system, and I can see why we're changing over. I'm just surprised that it took us this long to make this change. Because this 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 system's been, in effect, since we went to the new agreement with them in two thousand and sixteen, right?
Uh, through the chair, that is, that that is correct.
Okay, so our two six, our twenty sixteen agreement that we have with them is for six thousand cubic meters a month. Are we, are we still going to be able to to capture how many cubic meters a month we're using? From the uh, from the reads, from the meter reads?
So through through the chair, yes, we will be still still able to capture.
And are we getting, do you know if we're anywhere near that six thousand cubic meters a month at at the at this time?
Uh, I believe that we had a couple peaks in in twenty twenty-one where we were close to that six thousand. But on on average, I believe we are around forty-eight hundred cubic meters.
Okay.
Um, if you if you could just, um, just, if you would, Mr. Chair, just give me a moment. So yes, I think if you, i- if if everybody's able to turn back to page one oh one of one thirty, it sort of uh provides the uh a chart of the breakdown of the uh of the monthly consumption.
Okay, so the yellow is twenty twenty-one, and the green is twenty twenty.
Yes.
So we just come up to the six thousand in September, and it looks like June.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chair.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I I see where we're going here, this is a much, this is going to be a lot simpler, there's no question. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh Deputy Mayor, would you uh care to comment?
No questions, Chair, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Hunter. Thank you, and advisory members, Mr. Packwood and Mr. Bush, would you indicate, please?
There's no questions from Mr. Bush.
I see that. I think Mr. Packwood is either muted or not with this.
As such, Chair, I don't believe there's any questions from Mr. Packwood.
Thank you, thank thank you. In that case, then, uh, the recommendation, I believe I read the recommendation. Uh, could I have a reminder, please?
So move.
I have, uh, Mr. Mayor, moving, do I have a second? Councilor Hunter, thank you, I'll call the question, all in favor? Thank you, thank you. And that brings us to seven O of the agenda, which is the uh River Route Transit continuing the service. Um, and Mr. Grant, would you uh care to highlight the report and recommendation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So naturally, the purpose of this is to 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 look at committee and council to continue participating in the River Route Transit Service beyond the pilot stage uh and and moving into an ongoing municipal uh service. And the 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 main reason of 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 transitioning out of that pilot stage into an ongoing municipal service would be to allow us to be eligible to receive uh funding under the uh provincial uh gas tax transit uh portion, so. If you re- you recall that the the attached report was uh was was presented at the finance meeting, just wanted to sort of give uh a committee, it's an update where where the other partnering municipalities uh stand right now. And the council of the city of Brockville considering that the council direct staff to establish a long-term operational capital plan, the partnering municipalities to continue operation of River Route as a permanent cross-country transit service uh this evening. Uh, town of Prescott uh will be considering uh loo- looking at making this an ongoing municipal service and allocating approximately thirty-two thousand annually go towards the uh River Route Transit uh budget. And the town of Augusta is presenting to their council a report that will discuss the changes made to the service in the seat of their understanding of the level of support to continue running service past the pilot uh stage.
So, uh, Mr. Grant, what I'm hearing is that the other three municipalities are going to be coming back after tonight with more information.
So I I I would say that with the city of uh Brockville and the town of Prescott, they're going tonight seeking their council uh approval to continue this as a a a longer-range uh program. Augusta is is uh taking that, at least to continue beyond the the February twenty-fifth.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a completely different understanding of what's happening at the city of Brockville because I think what's, I mean, the 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 resolution that they're debating tonight is coming from their finance committee, direct staff to establish a long-term operational and capital plan with partner municipalities to continue operation. So that plan hasn't yet been established, and it's up to their staff to work with the partner municipalities to to establish it. Now, it's an operational and capital plan. And from my understanding is that capital plan includes the purchase of a vehicle. Right now, we seem to be piggybacking on a vehicle of uh, I mean, Brockville, as I understand it, is uh is uh changing out their vehicles once every three or five years or at a certain number of kilometers. And when the last change was made, a number of vehicles were declared surplus, and one of them is being dedicated to the route. So we're basically using a surplus vehicle from Brockville right now, as I understand it. So I would like to wait until we know what Brockville has decided to do, and what Augusta has decided to do, and what Prescott has decided to do, before we uh jump into this thing. Because a capital plan with the purchase of a vehicle can end up being quite expensive. I know that the staff has tried to cover that base uh by this recommendation that we have in front of us, uh which provides an upset limit of thirty thousand. But, you know, we also had a commitment from uh a previous goal round that we would be committed to ten thousand dollars, and that would be the limit. Uh but that's, I mean, you can see we've moved well beyond that. So I'd like to have a, uh, I'd like to see us defer this issue uh for at least another week until we see where these other municipalities have decided to how how they've decided to position themselves. Uh, so, Mr. Chair, with all due respect, I'd like to move that this recommendation be deferred at least until the council meeting. Dealt with that, if if not, might even be deferred at the council meeting if we don't know where the others stand. But at least we would defer it for one week until we know where the others stand. That would be my recommendation, I'd move a motion to defer.
Mr. Mr. Chair, if I take this, if I take that by may, uh, I think the difficulty here is that the 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 pilot stage uh really is due is due to end on February twenty-fifth in in realistically um to 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 extend beyond that, that's um, that's part of the reason why the recommendation is um structured in the way that it is, is that we can continue beyond that February twenty-fifth and and ensure that that those sort of terms and conditions uh are are established and agreed upon by those four municipalities before uh before extending uh with it sort of indefinitely with that, with a full capital uh plan.
Thank you, Mr. CIO, but what you're asking us to do is is go to the recommendation as it's written, but yet we're lacking information.
So through through the chair, real- really, what I'm asking you to do is uh extend for another year so that it can be developed and you can have a truer picture of what uh this River Route will be.
Okay. All right, uh, Councilor Gilligan, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, yes, you're the chair to the CEO, so um Mr. Grant, if we if we uh allow allow the thirty thousand dollars uh maximum, we're not, and we agreed to this, to continue on till December twenty December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Is that the feelings with the rest, like, city of Brockville, Prescott, and Augusta? Like, what happens if Augusta says no tonight?
So um through 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 the chair, um I can't, I I I can't speak on uh on behalf of the 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 other municipalities. But I I I do, I I certainly would not say that there is uh uh that it's unanimous on all four partnering municipalities on on where 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 this will go. Well, I I I guess where where I'm looking at from is that the, I think the key in all of this is to have those four participating municipalities have an operating agreement that that all four can agree on uh on as a a move-forward basis. That's, and 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 that's just not uh here, and it won't, and and it won't be here uh, you know, in the next week or 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 two weeks. I think there's, I think there's still uh some some work that needs to be done in that regard.
But we will, we will know probably by tomorrow which way the other municipalities are looking to go.
Well, maybe, maybe not.
So through, so 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 through the chair, if you have an update, that Prescott uh carried their motion unanimously. Brockville's motion was passed on on the consent agenda. Only the only municipality I'm not aware of at this stage is the county of Augusta.
Councilor Hunter?
Passed their consent with Roman, doesn't really tell us what what they passed, whether they're gonna keep funding a bus, or whether they don't or be paid for, or just just answer this capital. I don't know what uh really what that tells us. I can't see that you have a lot here, I can't see the resident city of Rockville are going to be intent to pay a hundred percent shot of paying for us, and all we do is pay the gas. Other three municipalities pay for gas and maintenance. I know as a counselor, I was a counselor, I shouldn't have agreed, uh, paying for the full shots for the bus for other municipalities, so. Will be a costly venture, as I brought up before, I'm not poetic, but I just don't see how this really serves the whole community, but just running up and down number two highway. Have different rhythm, back through some of our villages or something, a couple of times. Give other people opportunity to use it. Ridership forget to come up and down number two, if you have this.
Deputy Mayor, uh, would you like to uh comment?
Uh, yeah, thank, thank you, Chair. Um, certainly support the uh the recommendation as it's written. Uh, Brockville, you know, it's good to hear that they uh passed through consent agenda today without without even discussion the operational portion of uh of the agreement. Um, for for their portion, and Prescott passed unanimous, I I know nothing of uh of Augusta at this time. Um, and I think, you know, Brockville, the their their intention is that that the surplus bus will continue to be used uh until a capital plan can can come up uh at a later date. Uh, I think the idea was to make sure that this got funded for uh one more year at at the present with the way the present agreement goes, and then to revisit it uh, the capital portion of it uh at a later date. So I certainly support staying involved, um, and certainly support the modernization dollars uh being used for that ask.
And I just want clarification on the recommendation, that's the one that's written on page uh one twenty-two and not the mayor's recommendation to defer.
Uh, yes, the ma- the recommendation as it's written.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor, I'm sorry, advisory members, Bush and uh Packwood, would you indicate whether you have concerns or questions?
So, uh, just as I can, if you could, Mr. Chair?
Sorry.
I do, I do not see Mr. Packwood uh on the on the screen at this moment. Um, I do believe that Mr. Bush had a comment that he, I'm just applying this uh this much of a cost for such a low ridership uh from our community. As Councilor Hunter mentioned, it does not support the whole community.
Correct, thank you. Okay, um, now, I need uh I I need a little guidance here. Uh we have two motions.
No, I don't have a second, my motion is not on the floor. Now, you got, you only got, at this point, I
That's the only motion on the floor.
Well, and it's not on the floor yet, because it doesn't have a second.
Do you, do do you have a second, Mr.?
No, I do not.
So, do we call a question as to whether or not you have a second?
No, no, I think in in the absence of a second, or that this whole question of deferral is off the table, and so now you're back to the basic recommendation. So now you need somebody to move the recommendation second.
I, uh, yes, I I understand. Um, all right, then the recommendation as it's written on page one twenty-two, do I have a move?
I'll move.
Councilor Gilligan, moving, does he have a second?
All second.
Thank you, I'm going to call the question.
Uh, recorded vote, please.
And, okay, recorded vote, and I do not have just a moment. I'm going to do this by going uh around the table, and Councilor Hunter, yea or nay? For the recommendation on page one twenty-two.
Being as paper by modernization, um, vote favor favor of it, considering with a down to it, that I hope during this next year, the committee come up reconstructural of the roots.
Do you want that added into the recommendation, or do you just want that understood?
I don't think we added it to the recommendation. I'm sure someone on the board is listening to it.
Thank you. I'm going to remote Deputy Mayor.
I vote yea.
Mr. Packwood?
Mr. Chair, I don't
Still not on?
The clerk's indicating no, that he is, that Mr. Packwood is, is not on.
Okay, Mr. Bush?
His vote is no.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I vote nay.
And Chair will vote nay. So we have
Yea.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I see, I saw a D here. So that was a yea?
Yes.
Okay, so I have three yeas, one with no vote, and three nays. So according to our rules, motion does fail.
Well, Mr. Chairman, all that fails is that this committee fails to make a recommendation to the council meeting next week. That's all that fails. Motion can come back at the council meeting without a recommendation from this committee. And by that time, maybe they'll know a little bit more than we know tonight.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask, is it the will of the committee to at least continue the service until at least after the council meeting on February twenty-eighth? As the pilot project ceases on Friday?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. CIO. I do find it somewhat strange that the end of a pilot project end not at the end of the month or the end of any month, as far as that goes. Especially knowing that most councils, most municipalities have a council meeting though at the very end of the month or close to the end of the month. But, but yes, I I think that I will, I'll ask, I'll ask the committee members how they feel about this. To extend the program until after the council meeting on the twenty-eighth, is that, is that the gist of your?
If I may, if I may, until, yes, until a final decision's made by council. I just would like to see some clarification with respect to the continuation until that time.
Okay, for limited, limited news, Counselor Dillabon?
Yea.
And, Mr. Mayor?
I'll go along with that.
Counselor, Counselor Hunter and Deputy Mayor?
On the other hand, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Point of order, committees don't make decisions. We're giving it for
Yes, it's just, it's just staff asked
Yeah, I understand.
Committee to
Yeah.
Make the decision for.
Yeah.
And Deputy Mayor?
Absolutely.
Okay, and Mr. Bush and/or Mr. Packwood, if you're there, could you signify?
Mr. Bush has signaled that he's okay with that.
All right, nothing from Mr. Packwood?
I think he's there.
Great.
Mr. Packwood does agree.
Agreed, okay. And I will, as Chair, I will agree as well to that. So you have your agreement.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, that brings us down to item eight on the agenda, which is Counselor inquiries or notices of motion. Do I hear any? Yes, Counselor Dillabon?
Thank you, the Chair. I have a query. I would like to have staff look into, look into and study and information for the pickleball tennis court in Johnstown. Bring the information at the administration finance meeting in March. Reason massive for this is new information of reducing the scope of this project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Staff, you had enough now for that?
Certainly, if the media is, we can certainly prepare a report for that.
Why, why you ready?
I have a couple. First, I'm gonna carry on from to Dillabon, going to the courts in Johnstown. I don't know what the staff, what the cost would be to establish pickleball courts in the Spencer Arena here. We already have it. Prescott all the time there, we know. Using the pickleball on Spencer. It's already there. It's a matter of the nets and what the cost would be to set nets in it.
You're talking about non-hockey season.
Yeah.
And why would we not just go one step further and do the ingredient center as well? Now, I don't know
ingredient center runs longer, starts up, breaks around yourself in Spencer, but it shuts down mid-March. It starts up in mid-October. That's all ignored. Pickleball parks are on run too. I ever been in for operations managers. I've had a series of complaints over the last couple of storms in Spencer here about sidewalk cloud does a great job plowing, does a great job sanding. But it's late morning or mid-afternoon by the time sidewalk cloud goes here. And by that time, they've all hit their driveways clean, the sidewalk cloud comes by and clouds the driveway back in. I don't know why we can't have a part-time guy on this. It's about a two-hour job. Plowing the streets here, why we can't have a part-time guy on here to get these streets. Soon as the county cloud was through, then we get the sidewalk cloud. Then when the contractor's coming to clean all the driveways, people aren't calling the contractor back to clean the driveway again. The sidewalk clothes locked up the walkways and stuff going through. The cloud guard will first all the time. I don't think that's right, so. Say part-time guy for a couple hours. They ask, they always have the sidewalk cloud first thing in the day all the time.
Through the chair, we'll take a look.
Thank you.
Point of information.
Yes, go ahead.
What's happening here? Are we, is the operator from Cardinal coming here out to refinish the scene, Cardinal? Is that what's happening right now?
So through the chair, I believe that it's whenever one of the staff that are based in, whenever they're finished their routes, that they come and do the sidewalk in Spencer.
How it works?
Correct.
Snowplow? I agree with Counselor Hunter. I thought we had a better system in place than that. Must be, it must be really frustrating for people that are trying to run a business.
It's frustrating for a lot of seniors, especially around twenty-one and forty-four in the county. Counties, counties come out and plow. And I think it's frustrating for our operators too, that they don't get in quick enough. But they can get first pass through up to the county's plow the first time. The snow hasn't hardened. The county make a couple of trips up there. They don't get there to an hour, two hours after the plows win. These banks are already starting to harden. They're having a hard time moving.
I've heard nothing but great sense about it here.
Oh, yeah, they're doing a great job of, of locking up the driveways. I've had three complaints this week from seniors, but I have to call them back. Agents come back to clean driveways back again because they can't get out.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Counselor. And as indicated by our CIO, that will be up into. I will say that usually a private block on my street in Cardinal, it's plowed, it's done. I don't get a snowplow or a sidewalk plow either on William Street or on Monroe. But it's another topic. Now, regarding the former question, are we clear, Mr. CIO, on where we're going with that?
Through the chair, with respect to which item?
Well
Are you directly?
Counselor Dillabon brought up a topic and I thought we were, the committee was going to discuss that topic. Counselor Dillabon, the topic was?
Information, bring, have staff look into studying information for pickleball and tennis courts in Johnstown. Bring that information at the administration finance meeting in March. Reason being is using information out of it and reducing the scope of the person.
Correct. And your question, Mr. CIO, was if the committee is willing to do that?
We can bring that report back.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's fine. Okay. Did I miss anybody on the remote? Deputy Mayor?
Nothing from me, Chair.
Okay, and our advisory members, Mr. Bush and Mr. Packwood, you all ready?
Nothing from me, sir.
Thank you.
Nothing from Mr. Bush.
I see that. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number nine, which is the mayor's report.
No report.
No report. Item number ten, which is question period. I see no one in the gallery and I see no one on the phone. Questions? Thank you. We have no closed session tonight, which everybody might think is happy about. So I'm now looking for a motion to which Counselor, Counselor Hunter, thank you, who has a second here. Not that he needs one.
Yeah.
Counselor Dillabon, thank you. All in favor? We are adjourned at eight fifty-five. Seeing it correctly, but I'll check the atomic clock just about. Eight fifty-three.